At this time, I'll call the October 22nd, 2020 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag story?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any additions to the agenda, so I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the October 15th meeting. It also includes the fund expenditures of $108,233.93. We have wire payments, which is utilities of $8,609.38.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time we'll go to commission comments and committee reports. Craig, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I spoke to Brad earlier this week. Couple of road issues. I drove the loop last week, which is 2,500 over to, no, 1,900 I believe where it comes in, the Enterprise Road. Looks pretty good. There is some places that, you know, the sand was put down a little light in front of houses. And then I got a call about 3,400 Avenue between Camp Road and the county line up Ottawa County. I brought in some rocks for Brad to look at. It's, I drove it and the road was fine, but there is some bigger rock in the windrow and stuff. That's all I have, Lynn.
Is that the type of rock that probably would break down as it's driven over? And it was softer rock or is that not really in our?
Well, it's a little, yeah, it's a little bigger than what I'd want to do on my road and stuff. But like I said, and I told Brad before, probably what the problem was, the dump belly. And it could have been just a couple of loads they got out of the quarry that had some rock that wasn't sized right for the machine. And then the county didn't get up there and then blade it into a windrow. Because it would, it's not oversized, I mean, it's not real big, but it's, we had to replace the tires.
Brad, do you have samples of that?
I have a bucket of the junk.
This is a piece of it.
No. Move that.
Well, we threw a bit of rubber, it was so soft.
So what are they calling that, Craig? What are they calling that? Is it two inch orange?
No, it's not.
One eighty-three is what we were getting, so.
Inch and a half usually is the biggest for that. And like I said, what I picked off, I stopped three places. And usually the bigger step works to the top, so that's, but I didn't take a shovel full and put in a deal, but.
I know that's been killers when we placed that in the quarry.
But there was about two spots, you know, there must have been two spots where the rock was that way. I mean, it wasn't the whole from Camp Road over to the county line, Ottawa County line. There were just two spots where there was that rock.
I think a year ago, we had a mix-up like that also. I think it was 2,100 Avenue, I called, and it was awful big and we were concerned, a lot of complaints, but you know, it got wet and they packed that down in there. And I think, I think it really helped that road.
We've had a couple of calls over the years, a couple of times it was round to a ballast that they bought cheaper and put on there, which is not good for roads.
Yeah, I see.
Thank you, Craig. Ron?
Spent a little time in Junction City yesterday at the juvenile detention center. Things are going relatively well. The COVID deal has caused a little bit of trouble in response to, a lot of workers are taking that too weak, "I'm gonna get quarantine time thing off." And it's caused a little bit of, a little bit of problems in making sure they had enough help and things like that. And of course, the funding of that particular situation goes on. Of course, it comes down to wages and it costs the organization some money. So we need to be a little careful what's going on, but otherwise financially doing good. The facility's being well occupied unfortunately, but well maintained and taken care of. So that's what's going on.
Earlier this morning, we had employees that had stopped in at our request. And it was Diane Greeno was here, our HR director, and it was recognition of those that were five-year, ten-year, twenty-year. And so we recognized their years of employment. And of course, Brad was one that was thirty-five years. But so we recognized him earlier. And you know, when you talk about some of the important things as far as public service and what is done, and I say public, but we're serving the public. You know, the years of experience are a valuable asset for any organization. And you know, when you look at the cost of training and some of the factors, but it was certainly important to recognize these people and we have a great appreciation for them. And we do this kind of at a five-year interval. And obviously, there's some of the people that were gonna be in here to receive awards or such in years to come. And so I really appreciate that. Also, earlier this week, we had our board meeting for Central Kansas Mental Health over at Salina. It's a large enough meeting room, we were able to socially distance, but also, you know, everyone was wearing a mask, but we had several that zoomed in. I thought one of the things that was interesting, we had retired nurse practitioner that's on our board, Levita Montgomery. And she's helped out on a volunteer basis at our health department as some of the needs have arisen. And she kind of encouraged us, reminded us, you know, the importance of not letting our guard down as far as what's going on with COVID-19. And you know, it's important to take all the precautions and steps in a reasonable way for that. One of the items that was touched on is actually in the last month, they've lost a little bit of money over there because you've had more cancellations as far as appointments. Also, the entrance is an issue, although they do not turn anyone away. But at the same time, there's also recognition that some of the mental health of our communities and throughout the state, and in this instance, you know, they cover five counties. But the mental health issues, there's also a greater degree of anxiety and some issues that they're dealing with at all age levels, from whether it be isolation, or some of the disruption of some of the normal activities that people have been accustomed to in the last few years. And so anyway, that's certainly a factor that they're very much aware of and the county is aware of. And of course, we in vast as one of the partners with Central Kansas Mental Health. Also, we had Derek in from our landfill and gave us an update on what's going on out there. And this is the weekend that if anyone has any brush and limbs that they wanna take out, it's on the third week. It's free to do that. And also, we're in the middle of actually a free drop-off this week at the landfill. And he said it's been very, very busy, so you know, take that into account that there may be a little bit of a wait, because actually they're stacked up a little bit trying to get into the bay. So anyway, that's all I have. Are there any other comments from the commission? The next item we have would be the petitions, proclamations, and public comments. I'm going to take the proclamation that we have here first. And this is a proclamation, and we have a representative here from D-VAC. And I'll have you make a few comments after I read the proclamation. This is a proclamation declaring October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, including Dixon County. And whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically many are tarnished by one person's feeling of entitlement of power and control over the other resulting in violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise fourteen percent of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports thirty-seven domestic violent homicides were twenty-five point three percent of all homicides in Kansas in 2018. And whereas in Kansas 2018, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every nine days, a domestic violence abuser committed a violent act, reported to law enforcement every twenty-one minutes, and law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every forty-three minutes. And whereas in the last year, D-VAC served six hundred seventy-eight victims within our ten counties, fifty-eight of which were from Dickerson County. And yet, these numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as many were unable to access D-VAC during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic due to increased isolation. And whereas we, as the governing body of Dixon County, recognize this violence is inconsistent with Dickerson County values and cannot be ignored, excused, or tolerated. And whereas in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize yourself with resources, to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as a safe support system, to speak up against perpetrators of violence and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others, and prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time and resources to their local domestic violence agency. Now therefore, we, the Dixon County Board of Commission, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be this so proclaimed this twenty-second day of October 2020, and I would move that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have a representative here, and if you would introduce yourself, please, and provide us with some additional comments.
Of course. My name is Carly Tinkler. I am the campus advocate for D-VAC in Salina. I serve Kansas Wesleyan University as well as Case State Polytech in Salina. So I serve both of those campuses, but I also work as a full-time outreach advocate and shelter advocate as needed. We provide services within Dickinson County. We actually are growing our services a little bit for Dickinson County because we know the need is here. And it's not always feasible to drive to our Salina office for victims and people that are undergoing violence of some sort. We have extended our services. Our support groups unfortunately during COVID went to a Zoom platform, which I know that we're probably all kind of a little bit over. But we have extended into a male support group. It is currently meeting on Zoom, just so it has that extra element of anonymity. So if anyone is interested in that, they can definitely contact D-VAC. That is available. We have expanded our services into working with different attorneys within the Salina community. We have been working on trying to handle the large, we unfortunately were out of office from May and April. Our shelter did operate in that time, but we unfortunately were out of the offices. Outreach advocates returning upon June first. We did see the large increase of victims seeking services, whether it be from Salina County or anywhere really. So we've seen that pick-up. We've seen that unfortunately, it wasn't only domestic violence that increased during COVID. We've also seen an uptick in sexual violence. So those have been big concerns. I know personally, living in a rural area, it can be hard to access services, especially with the isolation accompanying domestic violence. So we definitely have gotten where we're becoming more technologically friendly. We are able to meet clients, do intakes by phone or Zoom if that is available or is a safe option for them. We're able to provide all services as necessary, and we do travel. So if we need to come to Abilene, we always do so. We are working on a sexual violence support group, but if a domestic violence support group is needed, that will be expanded into also.
So, and I assume you work to a certain degree with the sheriff's department, police departments in Dixon County, and hospitals and healthcare providers?
The county attorney's office is great. They do a great job of referring to us. They do a great job of partnering with us and making sure that we talk about needs that are there seen sometimes. Law enforcement is kind of hard, because for us, we have very, very strict confidentiality. And so it can kind of sometimes work, instead of working in accordance with law enforcement, we can't, we're not mandated reporters for the most part. We can't turn anything over without a victim's permission, victim or survivor's permission, and a verbal understanding of what that could look like safety-wise. So it can be very frustrating for law enforcement to work with this sometimes. But yeah, anytime, we try very hard to coordinate with them. We try to provide training, different resources. We always have advocates on call. So if there are things that come up, we're happy to go out, go to the hospital, go to make sure somebody's safe, if shelter is needed, coming maybe to Abilene to get them and take them to the safe shelter, whatever those things look like, so.
So you do provide a safe house and counseling and support and?
And we are open. We have trained advocates on, and we moved our building actually last year, so we're in a new facility. We love it. It's amazing. Much bigger. It fits all of us finally, so we have a little room to breathe. But it also allows us to better serve our survivors, our shelter. We were able to move to a safe new location for that also. It doubled the capacity. We are pet-friendly. So if people have their cats and dogs and don't have to stress about leaving those behind, they can actually bring them with them now. So those are some of the improvements that have been made just from our move. We're able to, like I said, provide so many services. Somebody has to do is ask and talk with us.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, I'd like to say just a couple of things. You know, I come from a small community. Just recently, we had a domestic situation happen. And the citizens of the community could see what was going on. The young gal was saying she was falling down a lot, pretty well beaten in the face. And we as citizens didn't know how to handle that, because we're always worried about legal ramifications. Somebody's there wanting to sue you or take you down. And this gal was getting beat up pretty bad. But it went to one citizen took the courage to take pictures of this battered person. We've been going through it for quite a long time to get help. So the bottom line is boots on the ground, right where it's happening, needs to be something happening and some support.
Yeah.
My heart goes out to women that's getting battered. And it's like, oh, we can't do this because this is legal. If I'm on the end of that stick and beat, I'm gonna be upset. And we need to, somehow, we need to intervene a little bit better than we're doing.
Well, and I think that you raise a lot of great points. One of the positions I take as on and off campus is, we do a lot of presentations, whether that be strictly about what domestic violence can look like, or any of the other things we handle. But it also comes into as bystanders, as friends, as community members, how can we support this person? What do we do if it's a friend, a family member, and we are feeling traumatized also? Because domestic violence just doesn't only affect the person who's directly going through it. It has ripple effects that affect friends, family, children, pets, you name it, people in the community. Growing up, I grew up in Bennington, so that's kind of where I'm from. I knew, we had a neighbor that I know a lot more now as an adult than I did then, but there was very much domestic violence. And it was, how do we intervene? And how do we intervene when maybe that person's not ready to leave yet and that's really frustrating to us? So there's a lot of things that we can provide, education, we can provide, you know, if it's just even saying, hey, there's a place for this. There's a place where you don't have to feel this way, you don't have to go through this, you don't have to, this does not have to be your life, you deserve better. And so that can be just that little verbal referral. Sometimes paperwork isn't always safe for them to have, but those are always things that we can definitely improve on. I know that during COVID, we worked really hard. Unfortunately, with me going back to campus, it really threw me into kind of a tailspin with that kind of thing. But I know we're working on doing a better job of reaching our outreach counties and doing some more presentations with faith communities, community members, any group, every group. I mean, we want, we want this problem. We want to work ourselves out of a job. We don't want to see the things we see day in and day out.
Well, thank you so much for the work you do. And we do have this proclamation that will give you.
Yep, and I brought purple ribbons, because today is Purple Thursday. So you're welcome to take, you do not have to, but I did bring. So they are available. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want a photo?
Yes, please.
And there's some for everybody else if you're willing, want, or you don't have to. So where would you like me?
I want to stand in front of us there.
Okay.
Your social distancing.
Social distancing. I'll just hold this this way then.
Between.
All right. I know you were smiling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to put this in on without throwing blood, so. Okay.
Don't need a word for cop right now.
Yeah, there you go. We do not have any petitions. This is the time that we do have public comment, and if there's anyone that would want to make any comments, now's the time you could do so for any item that is not on the agenda. And just step up to the podium, give your name, your address, and what your concern happens to be, and we'll be glad to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Hickin, 3125 Hawk Road in Abilene. I don't have anything prepared nice and tidy for you guys today. I come on behalf of myself, but also on behalf of many community members as well. This sort of piggybacks off of my earlier visit in July. And I think the overall idea is perspective that I wanted to bring up. And I do have, I guess, some concerns. One of the reasons that I'm here kind of piggybacks off of the Abilene committee member, Trevor Witt. I went and I spoke there, and I sent an email, and he sent a wonderful email back. And it talked about, you know, if you have any ideas, be constructive about it and, you know, come to see you gentlemen. And I really want to thank you guys for the work that you do. But I, you know, I have this idea, and a lot of us are concerned. I know Megan Armstrong here as well is concerned about how things are being treated, mainly with COVID. I mean, that's the big thing, you know, everyone's talking about today. We're concerned about how things are coming down, mask mandates. And again, one of the things I said, a lot of times it gets twisted. I'm not an anti-masker. People want to talk about that. I have it in my hand here. People talk about social distancing and staying six feet away, but then also, if you are six feet away, they want to get mad at you if you're not wearing a mask. It's very, it's very confusing to a lot of people. I wear my mask whenever I need to, whenever I'm, you know, close to people and whenever they ask me to. But you see, we're, we are socially distanced here. Again, if somebody feels uncomfortable, I'm more than happy to put mine on if you, if you let me know, but I feel that I'm a comfortable distance away. So I'm not being very concise, and I apologize for that. With the county health professionals, I do not know Brian Holmes. I will not say negative word about him. I'm sure he's a wonderful individual. I am sure it's a hard position to be in. I'm sure it's a very hard position that you all are in as well. I'm wondering, and maybe you can enlighten me a little bit, when you guys make decisions and you're speaking about the county health professionals and you take into consideration what they say, are you looking just at the body of physical well-being? You know, today, this makes a great transition. You were speaking about mental health earlier today, and we have physical health that we were talking about just now. This is a grave concern for me, as I spoke about in July when I was here. I ended up pulling my kids out of the public school. I have three in elementary school. I personally am not worried about the virus with my children. I also don't have elderly relatives nearby. That might have changed my decision. I'm not worried about them. There's a ninety-nine point nine-nine-eight percent survival rate for kids under twenty. That's what the CDC is saying. That is science. I pulled them out because I am very, very worried about their psychological well-being right now. I'm very worried about my kindergarten or learning how to read without being able to see the mouth and phonics. I used to teach French. I also used to teach virtual. I was trained as a virtual teacher. I taught it for three years. It is not a great way to learn for kids. I'm very worried about the back and forth in class and virtual teaching. It's not a great way. And we have wonderful teachers in Abilene and Chapman, awesome teachers. But it's very difficult for kids with inconsistency. The psychological well-being, the mental well-being, the spiritual well-being, all this talk about our well-being and health, I'm just, I'm asking you, what is health in your opinions? Are you taking into consideration, when you talk about our health of our community, are you just looking at the body of health? Or are you talking about the spiritual and physical well-being and health? That's a question I know many of us are asking. And so when they put it forward, you know, be constructive. I wanted to come and ask you guys that today, because I think it's a very important question, if you wouldn't mind, you know, enlightening us on that. Am I allowed to ask? I actually don't even know. Is that a question I'm allowed to do?
That's fine. And I appreciate you clarifying. I didn't know if it was rhetorical at first.
Oh, no.
But I understand you want a response.
Yeah.
You know, on the Central Kansas Mental Health Board, we've had this discussion for the last six months. I mean, we meet monthly. And I think that is a concern that everyone has. Now, from the, and some of this, we aren't necessarily all three in lockstep on this. There's probably things that we do have many areas of common ground. You know, from the medical standpoint, I have listened to a pulmonologist speak on the issue. And COVID has changed, you know, a lot. I mean, there's been mutations, we've been able to respond quicker in some areas. But you still have some of the concern. Yeah, we actually need to.
Even partially?
No.
Because it's public access. But, but I mean, there certainly is concern as far as the health of individuals. And I understand different age groups respond differently.
Sure.
But also, you have all of the age groups sometimes, you know, end up meeting each other socially.
Of course.
Or at a grocery store, or at a church, and certain events. So, you know, I, you know, all things considered, I think most people would have rather have seen 2020, the year 2020, be much different than it has been.
Of course.
But the reality is that, you know, we did have COVID. And, you know, just the other day in the news, they had out at Norton at the hospital there, they had ten deaths. And that's a little tiny county and town. And, and so, you know, some of the steps have been very, very necessary. And, you know, and I understand some of the isolation in the nursing homes. I understand some of the confusion as far as the children. You know, hearing some of this for the first time, we've also received letters on both sides. I mean, there's been some people saying, I don't care about the mask, I'm not gonna wear it, I'm against it. There's some that's, I, we're, I appreciate you in a responsible way saying you do social distance, you do try to maybe mitigate some of the risk involved. You know, people are probably washing their hands more. some of, of the, uh, the risk involved. Um, you know, people are probably washing their hands more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we've also received comments where, what's going on in your area that people don't want to abide by the rules? And if you go to Manhattan in a store, almost everybody's wearing a mask, and everybody seems to understand it. I mean, I've, you know, you rely on things you hear. I've been over there to investigate it myself. Um, you know, we had a letter from someone that lived in Lenexa that also, uh, has a business here, and, and, you know, kind of questioning, you know, why is there such conflict? I, you know, I think, um, some of what's happened in Abilene is maybe different than Chapman.
Mm-hmm.
They had a situation there. They have a new school, so they could separate just a little bit easier. That, you know, it probably could be a very lengthy discourse, but.
Right, right. I, I.
And, and maybe some of the other commission has some comments or ideas on it.
I, I guess, I guess my question is, when, 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 when you all are considering, um, public health, the word public health, is it, is it strictly, um, the health of the body, or are you also bringing in, um, people in the field of psychological health and, you know, mental health and spiritual health in your decisions? Because we are, we are humans. What makes us different as humans and animals is that we do have those, those layers that we need to think about, and it is, it is, it is different. It, again, we're, we're full in those aspects, and, you know, what I think is a little bit different, if I might just bring it to this level, when, you know, we all enjoy going to zoos. We enjoy going to aquariums, and, you know, I look at these animals and dolphins, and I love watching the dolphins, but at the end of the day, if I had a choice for a dolphin cooped up in this little, little, you know, area, I would want the dolphin to be free. I think almost all of us would, because we, we understand at a gut level that freedom is something that's more important than, than safety and having, you know, a long life with a veterinary, and, you know, having your food given to you. But also, freedom comes, um, with challenges. It's not as safe. You, you might not live a longer life. It's this gut understanding for animals that we're willing to give them freedom over safety, but for some reason with humans at the same level, we don't always, we would choose safety over freedom for humans, which is kind of an interesting, uh, a parallel to draw. But we, we look at life sometimes as this safety and longevity of life putting over top of freedom. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm, I'm not making that comparison to anyone. It's fine. Um, but what I am saying is, is sometimes there's this negativity towards people who want to question, just question, not saying it's wrong, because again, I'll, I'll mitigate, I wear masks, all these things, but for the people who are just questioning some of these, these things, they're, they're called by people who do morning shows. They're called names like Ding Dongs and Mental, and there, there's all these, these things, and it's not, it's not helpful. There's a lot of very divisive things going on, and it's, I don't believe that it's selfish to question. And, and I guess my second question would be moving on, something I brought up in July that I would have at that time thought it would be some dystopian nightmare, was, you know, please watch out, and what are your thoughts on the vaccines being mandatory? Now, we're, we're approaching that time, and just wondering, and this is not a rhetorical question, um, what are your thoughts, maybe all of you, because you all vote on making the, the vaccines that are coming up mandatory for our citizens, because I think it's already hot topics on, on mass, you know? If you do that, are you, you know, what movements are, is it going to be mandatory for our kids to go to school? Is it going to be mandatory for people to shop in our stores? What are you thinking? A lot of people in our community are asking these questions. I'm just the only one here, um, willing to ask you those questions, but a lot of people are very scared. Some people, like you said, there's always people writing in and who are saying, yes, make it mandatory, and there's a lot of people who are scared to death that that's coming down the pipeline. I would love to ask you that question.
Do you want me to respond, Lynn?
Uh, sure, that'd be fine, yes.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question, but, and it's, it's going to be above our pay grade. You know, it's going to be a state decision. Would I support it? Uh, yes and no. Uh, if it signs come out and say it's a good vaccine, I'd certainly be in, first one to get one after the other people that got it that needed it more than I did. Not that I'm, not the over sixty-five, but it, it's, it's going to be dictated by this legislature for us. So, we have no, the county has no official that we can make anybody take a flu shot or COVID-nineteen deal. So, it's, I'm not saying the point is new, but it is.
And, you know, there are people in the world that don't believe you need a polio vaccine, either in Africa where there's areas of polio, and, and the flu, the flu shot is optional. And, and, you know, I, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, I'm all for freedom. I'm all for the various amendments, but, but it's also, I think, at some point, people have to realize that we might disagree on some issues, but we don't have to be disagreeable about it. And, and, you know, my, my realm of what I can do is for myself, and, you know, we're, it, it's not going to be compulsory or mandatory, and I don't think that would fly at any level, um, and probably cost, constitutionally wouldn't, you know, be a factor. And, and, you know, if there is a vaccine that I felt comfortable with, I, I possibly would take it. But, and I know, I know there's three or four pharmaceuticals that are working on that. And, you know, I think they're doing their due diligence, and it's not just a race to come up with something haphazard. I mean, I think there's, it may be quicker than before, because, you know, typically it can be several years. And I don't know that we, as a society, I don't, I'd, I'd rather see a vaccine come out.
And just for the record, I'm not anti. I have all my vaccines. I just, I'm also familiar with history and what happened in nineteen seventy-eight, and that, you know, it just makes me a little leery, but I am generally for vaccines, but, and what, I do have.
Yeah, well, I'll just, I'll just come about a different way.
Yeah, no, sure. I, I appreciate all you answering. I really do.
Have you ever had a near-death experience?
Um, well, I've been caught in a war, um, and, um, that wasn't very pleasant. People shooting at me in the middle of Africa with rebels, so, I mean, that was pretty.
So, conflict?
Yeah.
And, and, and were you briefed about what you should and shouldn't do in that conflict? Did you follow instructions?
Um, I, it wasn't necessarily like that. I was trying to get a group of students out from a war zone.
Well, let me show you my near-death experience and put you a little bit perspective, and maybe there's somebody a little bit stronger and smarter than we are down here. I was a young boy, probably six or seven years old, out on a lake one Saturday afternoon with our parents and neighbors in a boating deal, going around the lake and just having so much fun. And we were told, as we got up to the dock, to get up, get up on the dock and sit there while the, the parents loaded the boat. But, like most children, you don't listen so well. And I thought I'd go out and play in the water, but the water happened to be pretty deep, and I couldn't swim. And it was a horrid feeling to feel yourself in that water helpless, and everybody else being occupied loading a boat. So, as I'm going down in the water, not knowing how to swim, not knowing what to do, your mind works pretty hard, and I kept hearing this little voice that sounded like, "Go ahead and drink the water. You're going to be fine. You'll be just fine. Drink it." But then, on the other side, I heard somebody say, "Do you really believe? Do you believe drinking that water is going to make you fine?" And for some in gosh reason, as a young boy, all the little things that I had done wrong was in a book read to me, from A to Z. How that could ever happen, don't ask me. I was reminded of all the little words that I used as a child, the little terrible words, and the things I had done wrong. And I kept asking, "How, how'd you know that? How'd you know that?" And within a few minutes later, somebody jumped in and saved my life. And I shared that story with them, that in life, sometimes we have to believe in those that govern and take care of us, that they are smart enough and have your well-being best interest. I don't know of anybody, whether it's in legislature, whether it's in state or federal government, that's sitting on a board or a council here to hurt the public. We are here to fight for the public, and I'm kind of appalled by the thought that basically you're saying we're stupid, and I don't, I don't think that. We take advice from professionals, people that spend their life and careers doing what they do. And, uh, I, I stand up for these guys here, and stand up for what the county's doing, and I'm very proud of it. And I hope, uh, we don't have to bury a soul in Dickinson County. That's what I have to say.
I would, I would respond to Kylie's question about the mental health department, if you would like me to.
Sure.
Uh, you know, we started out back in March. This was all kind of foreign to all of us, and, uh, Dr. Holmes and myself and John Holken, our director of health, uh, and the nurses of the health department, we meet weekly. Uh, there's been a few weeks we didn't meet, but we meet weekly. Typically, we're meeting with school districts too, and we just had our, our meeting yesterday. It's Wednesday at three-thirty, and we, everybody zoomed in, and, and the purpose of that is to keep everybody on the same sheeting, is to keep up to date on what's going on. Uh, originally, probably for the first month or two, maybe three, there wasn't much conversation about the mental health aspect of it, uh, but then it became very apparent that, uh, there were concerns that by closing schools and having kids out, we may be doing more damage than we are having them in school and risking the COVID. So, that's been an extremely, a big, uh, consideration from the July area, you know, or so, from that, from that time period. Uh, Dr. Holmes had brought several, uh, document, documents to the meetings and went through those that came from the National Pediatric Association or something. I don't remember the acronym. Uh, that basically said that, that same thing, that we need to be very cognizant of the fact that we may be doing more damage, that it is extremely important that kids, you know, people.
Right.
But kids, more importantly, as a developing, be involved in that environment, have them in place. So, to answer your question, that has been a big concern. These guys don't get involved in those meetings every week. That's at a management level, so they may be why they couldn't quite answer that question, but we do, as I will in a minute, brief them on the meeting we had yesterday, uh, that I do, and, and, uh, kind of keep them at that upper level of what's going on. So, it has been a tremendous concern. It's a tremendous concern to the school staff as well. They realize that. And so, we're trying to work as a, as a team countywide with five school districts and the health people, and of course, Dr. Holmes is communicating with the state on a daily basis, if not hourly sometimes, on what's going on and making sure that we're on top of everything to do what's best for everybody. So, to answer your question, it has the tremendous concern.
That is, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. I really appreciate that, because I know I read recently that, you know, although no children have died in Wichita, um, in the last few months, a few have committed suicide, and that's, that was very alarming. So, that is, that is really what I appreciate hearing.
Yeah, it's a tremendous concern to ours, and, and, uh, yeah, we're coming, I can tell you from years of experience, we're coming into that holiday season.
Yes.
Where we typically see.
Yeah, exactly.
Teen suicides.
Yeah, it's so terrible.
You know, God, hope we don't this year, but that becomes a big concern, even outside the community.
Right, exactly. It's, it's just put a lot of extra pressure, I think, on.
Absolutely.
Right. Well, I, I thank you very much. I know this is a hard time. I thank you all for your service, and I thank you for your responses. Um, Commissioner Roller, I, I know last time I felt like you very much didn't listen to what I said and blew me off, and, um, I appreciate your comments. I do. I, um, certainly didn't mean to insult any of you. I, I don't know how that was taken. I find a response, um, very disrespectful, and, um, I don't know how you took it that way. I think you're very, uh, defensive in the way that you came after me, and I find that extremely rude, and, um, I, I don't really understand why you said those things. I don't unders, I'm very sorry you had that experience as a six-year-old. I have no idea what that relates to this, other than you wanted to try to get empathy and prove some kind of point, uh, that has nothing to do with what I said, and, um, I'm trying to be respectful in what I said, um, back to you, but I find that very, um, very strange. Thank you.
Um, I will mention, and kind of just to redirect, um, and you mentioned the spiritual aspect, and I, I mean, I think that's important, and some of that's, you know, personal. You, you have separation in church and state, and, um, you know, I, I think it's, all of those, to be well-rounded, you know, you, faith in God is very important.
Correct.
And, and I think sometimes that's the area of support. Um, you know, that people have various approaches that they take, and, and one thing that kind of came to mind too, as we're having this discussion, um, I had one parent call me, and they were concerned, um, be- because, because of COVID, their child was unable to attend school. And then she went on to share that, she said, you know, "He doesn't want to go to school anyway. He's bullied. He's been in the principal's office several times." And I kind of focused in on that, and she seemed more concerned that a COVID test was needed than the fact he was being bullied. And, 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 and the thing is, it seems, you know, there's, there's a lot of directions and a lot of emotions that surface, and I think we need to deal with the science and the facts, but it's also important to have the emotional intelligence to proceed in a, and safety is an important part. And, you know, sadly, this isn't a one-size-fits-all, and, you know, it'd be easier if it, if it was, and most things in life, you know, um, most, most things in life are, are complicated at times.
Sure.
And, um, and, you know, I've had people say, "Well, you know, a- as a Christian, you know, why don't you act on faith instead of fear?" And I, and I don't know that that's, you know, I understand their point, but having said that, you know, I know there's a time, you know, in, in my doctrinal belief, that, you know, God will call each of us home, and none of us know when that time or hour is, but having said that, I, I respect the fact that COVID is out there. I, I don't fear it, but having said that too, you know, I, when I get in the car, I put on a seatbelt, and, and it's not that, you know, I ignore the fact that there may be a time God calls me home, but, you know, still, we need to take safety measures, and we're trying to think of what's safe for all age groups. And so, that's a little bit, you know, where, where I come from on that. And, um, anyway, I appreciate your comments. Appreciate your being, being here, and learned about your business earlier in the work study session, and, um, glad to have you here in Dixon County, and, uh, six generations is a long time, so there must be some homestead land up there. Okay. Yes.
I've got a few public comments, if we still have time for them. I'm not sure if there's a timelimit on these meetings or not, but, um, I do appreciate you having these meetings open to the public, and I was, had the privilege of reviewing, um, since late June, all of your commissioner meetings, so it's quite interesting listening to all that, and, uh, I found a few important things I'd like to bring up today, and the first one being, um, that of the role of our county health officer. That is something that's dictated by the Kansas statute sixty-five-two-oh-two, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It clearly outlines Dr. Brian Holmes' role in a public health pandemic, yet he has been documented harassing businesses out in Solomon. That was published in the Topeka Capital, October twelfth. The mayor of Solomon, Mayor McMillan, was quoted in that paper as having said that Dr. Holmes is out here telling our businesses, "If they don't mask up, we're going to close them down." I don't see that as one of the roles and responsibilities of Dr. Holmes on this list. We also have been told that, from Dr. Holmes during a county, or city commission meeting, that people don't die from depression or anxiety, but we have an unprecedented amount of teens dying from depression and overdose, as documented in the Christian Post, July thirty-first. Our county's not taking that into account right now. We're worried about, we're hyper-focused on COVID, 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 COVID. That's not acceptable. And Dr. Holmes is, has said these things out loud, that depression, anxiety, people don't die for those things. This is not true. They are. It's called suicide. It's overdosing on those pills. Um, I have had calls, people, um, that have spoken to the commission, and Dr. Holmes has taken on his own to call those people after the meeting and have a discussion with them, and tell them, "You shouldn't be going to those commission meetings. You should have come to me." Pretty sure that's not how government works. If someone has an issue with the county mandate, if someone has an issue with the mandates or ordinances that you guys have approved from Governor Kelly, they have every right to come to this podium and speak their mind, email you, and call you. That is how this government works, regardless of what kind of pandemic we in, are in or not. I found that to be very inappropriate, yet I have heard no comment from our commissioners on his behavior. We are not clearly communicated about the current situation here of COVID here in Dickinson County. We get a snapshot, a quick snapshot, of how many people are sick, how many people have died, and that age brackets. That information is, for all intents and purposes, useless. We have other people in our community willing to go in and break those numbers down for us and tell us, "How many active cases are there?" That's not in that snapshot. To tell us how many people have been hospitalized, that'd be a handy piece of information, wouldn't it? How severe is it? And how many people are in the ICU? Is our hospital being overwhelmed? We don't know from week to week, and our health officer isn't communicating those things, and that is, in his job description, as a piece of communication. We are currently living in a time of fear. Our teachers can't speak out. If you work in education, they're not going to show up here. They're afraid for their jobs. They don't want to lose that job as a teacher. Anybody that works in law enforcement's not going to come to this podium. Their job is obey your orders. They have no voice in this. Business owners, terrified. What, Chris West came in, spoke at the city council, had plenty of people online bashing, and apparently you guys aren't on Facebook, so I'm not really sure you, how you know what the pulse of what's going on for me today is in our county or over the long term. People come in, "I'm not shopping there. I'm not going to do business here." Total backlash. And the businesses know that's a real thing if they come up to this podium and speak their mind. You'll have a news host attack you for speaking your mind and saying, "Those people are, they're all mental and ding-dongs." No, we're not. Information today is available at a rate that's unprecedented. You can pull data by the day, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. People can read that. They can understand that, and they can look to you for guidance, because you are smart people, but that doesn't mean you're making smart decisions. You also have people in our medical field who can't speak up here. They're afraid for their jobs, and they're watching people wilt away in our nursing homes. I've had front and center experience with that, working as a caretaker for a family here in town. Husband was in the nursing home, wife was at home, watched the husband deteriorate to the point that he ended up in the ER. She wasn't allowed to see him in the ER, even though it could be his last day on this planet, She wasn't allowed to see him in the ER, even though it could be his last day on this planet because of the concern for COVID. I have watched families be put in very difficult real-life positions and they're dealing with these day to day. And they're watching our commissioners stand by and not make any significant change or give us reasoning behind the policies that are currently in place. You say over and over again, this is a small amount of people concerned. You'll give an update for the last twenty meetings about the emails and the communication you've received. But you haven't said how many pieces of communication you've gotten. Are the majority negative or the majority positive? You'll give us snapshots, but nothing really meaningful, nothing to really take away from. You keep referring to it being this small group of people because the majority of the people that could speak up, teachers, police officers, business owners and medical professionals, can't come here and say anything. Those are some of our biggest employers in this town. You've wiped them out. That leaves us of the retirees, who you can't touch because their businesses aren't at risk, and our stay-home parents and people who don't have businesses here in Dickinson County. Is that really the people you want speaking up to the rest of us? So you sit here and you save face and you defend Dr. Holmes' actions. So it is safe to infer, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that the commissioners fully support or are complicit of his actions of harassing churches and businesses because he has been into churches. He did quietly shut down churches for four weeks with the exception of having services in person. One of the churches, a couple of churches I'm involved with here locally, experienced that firsthand. Now, it wasn't a mandate that was put out and he probably put in writing. It was that you're gonna do this or we're gonna shut you down for real. Again, no comment from commissioners on that. It just happened and we're expected to go with it. So I don't recall that the commission led the charge on any of Dr. Holmes' actions. But I do have a clear understanding from the lack of comment and the lack of communication that you agree with him and his, and his harassing and creating this, this sense of fear and terror. You said you might keep schools open, but you still close school when you have the option of modified school quarantine. That's a beautiful option. I'm not even sure if you're aware of it. Where if the teacher tests positive and all the students are now considered positive exposure, they are not required, the students can stay in school, the teachers stay home on quarantine, and the children are required to quarantine at home after school hours for two weeks to make sure that we're containing that spread. That way, it still stays in the building, still stays among the population we want to keep safe, that zero to seventeen can quarantine still on their free time, but still attend school in person. I've been told several times, we don't have enough substitutes. Well, I know for a fact, three-point-six million dollars was poured into Dickinson County in the form of COVID relief. And I'm sure somewhere in there, we probably could have afforded a few substitutes. Just my guess. Recently, at a, at a recent meeting, you guys said that a restaurant was closed. But Dr. Holmes came in and guided you, guidance, and they were able to sanitize that restaurant. And even though they had a positive exposure of some sort, wasn't real clear during that meeting, the employees were able to come back within like a forty-eight-hour window and get that business back up on its feet and running. I'm really surprised we have that ability at a restaurant here in town, but we can't apply that same logic and train a thought for keeping our schools open. I'm primarily concerned with this as we approach the cold flu season, where a lot of kids are gonna be sent home for having the sniffles and a cough. They don't have to have a fever right now to be sent home. I think that's something we need to consider as far as how do we evaluate a student on being sent home? And what does that quarantine look like? I would like today to know your thoughts about Dr. Holmes' actions because as of today, I've seen one email from Chamberlain that says, any emails that are sent in don't warrant a response from the commission. And I have that in writing. So I would like to know what your thoughts are regarding Dr. Holmes' actions that's pretty well seen to be beyond what his role is defined as.
Uh, I, I have to, which one of the, I, we get, we've got about seventy emails over this issue.
Seventy?
Yeah, when I-
This month?
Uh, in the last six weeks.
Okay.
And I'm, now that's broad figure. Which one did I say that, you make that statement that I sent out?
Oh, I can provide it to you. It's um, dated back on-
Did I, did I send an email out like that?
Oh, yeah. It's from your email account.
My email account?
It said that uh, the emails that are sent in don't warrant a response. Cause Brad Holman had responded to one and the person was annoyed that the commissioners haven't responded.
What I made the comment was, but if you're taking out of context, was it was on the, they cut and pasted the same issue out of the same paper and they didn't ask for response? That's what I was-
Do we have to request a response to get one of them sent?
No, no, but it was all the same, well, some people don't, they just sent the same text. They've cut and pasted the same article.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't remember, it's been about six week, six weeks ago. And I asked Brad, I said, I'm not gonna respond because they, all they're doing is give us information about, you know, and it was all the same information, like on about ten or twelve emails.
Mm-hmm.
So I, 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 and it come to the commission and I told the other two commissioners that, you know, it's not something I think we need to respond to. So I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Right, and to my knowledge, there's been no response to people's emails and concerns and even in, in the public forum that's here, there really hasn't been a lot of commentary.
Uh, I responded probably to about twenty.
Twenty out of seventy, so that's what, less than-
But a lot of them didn't, didn't ask for response.
So we do need to clearly ask for response at times.
Well, if it's asked a question, and like I said, and I, and I don't, and it comes to me, so I control the computer.
Right.
And I gave Lynn Hill a couple of emails that came today. And like I said, and then I forwarded a couple of them to Brad to respond to, and one of them was on a school bus issue. And a lot of them um, were in relation to school issues that we have no control over. I mean, we don't control the schools, the schools can do whatever they want to.
So the county health officer that you guys are in charge of doesn't have anything to do with our school districts?
He gives them advice.
But wouldn't that be at the discretion of your leadership?
We, the mandate is not a mandate for masks. It's a recommendation. If schools wanna mandate it, they can. Cities can mandate it. Now, if we'd make a mandate for the whole county, they'd have to follow our rules.
So the order that you guys agreed to pass, that Governor Kelly approved, was an ordinance for face masks, is that correct?
No, it was a recommendation.
A recommendation for face masks?
Right.
So our businesses can take down those signs out of their windows because it's a recommendation? And we can, and we don't have to worry about Dr. Holmes going into businesses in Solomon and telling them that they don't ask, that they're gonna close down.
He, he can still do that.
He, he can advise when there's a positive case and he can advise a group of, or a, a, a county. But as far as taking his personal time or even maybe on the clock, cause I thought he was a very busy man. I don't think he even showed up to that, that June, uh, July fourth call, July third call, cause he's that busy. So he's finding time to go into these cities and tell people, you're gonna mask up or else. But you just told me just now, that's optional.
But he does have the, the authority by the statute.
So it either is a rule or it's not, and it can either be, be mandated by Holmes or it can't, but we, we have clear communication.
Process and he can give recommendations. And, you know, some of this, we've kinda done a shotgun approach and taken a lot of pot shots and hit a lot of things.
I summarize it.
And, and we do, you know, we do have public comments. We've had it at all of our meetings. I've had people tell me personally, they, they say, you know, I can't believe that you would run for public office because you're gonna upset a few people, there're gonna be people disagree with you. And so I think there is a concern that some people, not just business owners, but it's like, you know, why should you get involved with elected positions? Because, you know, you're putting yourself out for uh, for criticism and such. Now, going back to when this first took place and they made the closures, it was back when there was basketball, there's graduation, uh, state tournaments, I mean, there were a lot of things. And, you know, it wasn't good news for people. But there's a safety aspect that you not only look out for yourself, you look out for others. There also were some unknown variables at that time. And, and at that time, I participated and listened to briefings from the governor and they went out all across the state of Kansas. We had a pulmonologist come in from Manhattan that spoke at our Rotary Club and told what had happened back in New York City. There's another pulmonologist that I've been in touch with in Kansas City. And, you know, some people really, they're, they're kind of appalled because we, we, you know, people have a right to do what they want. And there's some people that do not wear the mask. And there's some people, for various reasons, health issues, maybe a little claustrophobia. You know, there's also some that they're just outright being defiant. And, and, you know, they're, I can go out on interstate. And, you know, potentially there can be some road rage. Not everybody's gonna agree with what the other person does. And, you know, it goes back to what I said before. I think there's a need for emotional intelligence to try to consider the facts and try to find out what the greatest good is. We also met as a county official and I invited school board members, but also the health department was there, Dr. Holmes was there. The school superintendents were there. And this was clear back in midsummer saying, what can we do to make sure that our schools can open up? And there was safe distancing that was considered, there was masking. We had the money that was available, the Sparks money. And you mentioned, for example, that, well, they could've used some substitute teachers. We made the money available. We, we were the facilitator of that. It came to the county. Each individual school district can say, this is what our priority is. And, and so as long as it's within the guidelines. So, so it's not a, our position to go into the schools and say, why don't you put more money? Or why don't you put more effort towards substitute teachers? I think you implied that somehow we had some control over that.
Well, because you were the governing body that approved those expenditures.
But, but it was the school district.
My understanding that your leadership would guide those school districts because you're approving that funding.
To have three-point-six million dollars and to go in and tell Harrington, this is what I think you should do with your money, or Chapman School District or Solomon, you know, it's one of those things. At some point, we need to kinda stay in our lane, but make information available and try to facilitate that. And, and, you know, there were a lot of possibilities out there. There are some school districts that have utilized churches and other buildings where they would take their students so they could socially distance. You know, there, there have been some groups, for whatever reason, have been more successful in working through this pandemic than other groups.
Have we explored why they're so successful? Is that not initiative of our county?
It, actually, I don't know that it is.
But it's not.
Because, because there's some, there's some individual. And for example, as you've mentioned, you know, why don't we have more statistics on COVID? Why don't we do this? Our total budget, we're dealing with the law enforcement center, we're doing, we're dealing with the sheriff's department. We have EMS that's getting calls. And, I mean, we could put data out there that's just voluminous. And, you know, sometimes people are more interested in a specific item, which is fine. But, but that isn't our total point of concern. And that's not what Brad is gonna spend all of his time on, is, is COVID. And I don't know that it's up to us to go in and tell the superintendent of the school, this is, is what you should do to help solve some of your issues. And, and what's important is that it, it's really, it's a community partnership that we try to work together. And we have, as a group, you know, met with some of those individuals and some, you know, I mean, everybody processes it in their own way.
So it's, it's my understanding from your, your comments that you were fully supportive of Dr. Holmes going out into these areas unprovoked, really.
Dr. Holmes um, is a health, is a health professional. There have been some discussions that we have had. I don't believe he's on Facebook to the degree he was before. And, and, you know, sadly, some within the community. And, and you seem to have a lot of resources far as Facebook. I mean, I get feedback from people and I have people tell me this was on Facebook or they'll paste something and send it to me.
Cause he had that masket or casket comment he had for the student.
He is on Facebook, from what I understand.
Yeah.
But, but the thing is, I don't know, I, I'm looking at what's taken place more in the last month than what took place four months ago or six months ago. Now, we can't erase history, we can't erase what has been said. But if we wanna fight for what happened three months ago and have that be the central theme of how we're gonna solve a problem, you know, at some point, a-at some point, and I'll use the illustration, I've got a rearview mirror that I pay more attention to what's in front of me.
Right, and so, and that's a valid point.
And, and I, and I think that's what we need to do as, as a county and as community partners, is we need to pull together. And, and I've had a few people that have, have visited with me. Diane Miller called me a few times. And as we started to rehash some things, both of us kind of agreed on the phone. That, you know, we really need to concentrate, where are we at right now and how are we gonna step forward?
Well, I think that's a really valid point.
And, and we're not trying to erase what took place. But I think on anything, if you wanna find resolution and you wanna find direction and you wanna solve problems, you better start where you're at right now and what are you gonna do today and what are you gonna do tomorrow? And um, and some of the addresses, some of the issues you've mentioned have been addressed.
So the modified school quarantine will be taken into consideration as we move into this cold flu season?
There could be some discussion on that, but the modified quarantine has not been decided upon. The um, you know, I, I read where the superintendent out at Hayes, Ron Wilson, and we're familiar because he was here and he was down at Harrington. You know, they've talked about having the quarantine changed to ten days. I mean, maybe that's something, you know, there's things that, that can be looked at and put on the table. But the other thing that I've also heard is across the United States and in other counties, this is not a unique situation to Dickinson County. It's something where tensions are a little bit higher than what they've been in the past. And when you talked, earlier when we were talking about the emotional stability and mental health and spiritual health, one concern I have, because there's so much, this has become such a battleground, I think kids are impressionable. And I think it's important that sometimes they challenge things and they think out of the box. But also, I don't wanna teach kids defiance. And, and I, and I, I, I think we're, we're on some thin ice there.
Cause there's a difference between defiance and thinking from a platform of thinking logically and questioning authority. I don't know you, but I'd like to raise thinkers. I'd like to raise a kid that says, well, if I have this mask on, I'm ten feet away, I'm six feet away from you and we weren't in the same room for ten minutes, why do we need plexiglass too? Like, I wanna raise thinkers. It's not a sense of defiance. It's a, it's a, like I said, working together as a team requires everybody to have input into that team.
And, and case in point, look at the ads on TV. I'm switching examples here, but you look at, at what's on TV and the political ads back and forth on a national level and I know, I need to bear a length of that.
The political ads on the national level don't affect me the same way that decisions made here.
But what I'm saying i-is, is the art of visiting and negotiating and reaching reasonable decisions, um, there's work to be done on that.
Absolutely. I could agree more.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, notices and communications, as Craig mentioned, we did receive a couple of letters. One of them having to do with COVID and, and how that affects people that are renters. We also have from Tri-County Chamber member, um, a solicitation for for helicopter ambulances. And I think, not to buy one, but I think to-
I was gonna say, I don't think we have had a report.
Just to make it available. We also have from the Kansas Sheriff's Association and we have also from K-Cam, an update that we've received. Were there any other notices or communications?
I don't have any.
Okay. We do not have any resolutions? We do not have any unfinished business or other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
We haven't had the work session. You know, we need to, Brad's reporting Doug's.
Oh, I was gonna skip over that, so. Doug's always quick. I'll take him first.
I can go first. I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Brad does have something to report, though.
I, I can talk for a little bit. Okay, so. Uh, first of all, we did our bi-weekly jail update Monday. Uh, just to go through that, we're at sixty percent on the jail project. We're a little over here into it and uh, things are going again. As I told you last week, we got some of the Masons back- We got our Mason, some of the Masons back. We don't have them all. He's hoping to have them all next week. I think that's what I told you last week. Uh, but they're getting close to finishing the Manhattan project. Hopefully we can get them all in. If you notice, the walls are going up out here again and things are progressing, albeit slow. Plumbers and electricians are continuing to work in the jail. Painters are taping off the ceilings, getting ready to paint the ceilings in, in the jail cells in the pods. Uh, and things are going well. They did get the sewer line hooked up last week, uh, to the public sewer system. They've called in, uh, for locates and are waiting on the boring company to come do the water line. They have to bore underneath First Street to get that connected to the city water line. And we'll have that done. And they're starting to work on the east side of the parking lot to get the, uh, light pole standards and those things all done. So they did publish another schedule. I didn't make a copy of it because it moves, it's a moving target for you, but we're looking, you know, after the first year, could be even into the first February before they're, they're completed and ready to move things up. That could change weather dependent and if we get the rip on it, um, could come sooner. So I mentioned in the work session, I met Tuesday with the, uh, the Harrington mayor, city manager and the public works directors, uh, to talk about the lakes and how to market those. And they're, I'm very excited as they are to have a group down there. Lori wants to work on that and, and try to market the southeast part of our county. And so we're going to have another meeting coming up. We're working with Chuck Scott in EDC and he's got a couple developers that he's familiar with that are going to come in and help, uh, kind of guide us through that process, promote and start with. And, uh, we'll see what, uh, what we can do to participate in that, so. Yesterday, we had our weekly school conference call and meeting update, as I'd mentioned earlier. We had five school districts on, not all the superintendents were on, but the nurses were. And then, of course, we had our staff, health department staff and Dr. Holmes was present. Uh, what we do every week is we go through and get a report on how things are going. Uh, I was pleasantly surprised that the numbers of confirmed cases and the numbers of either PUIs, persons under the investigation or quarantines are way down from what they were. Uh, that's a good thing. Uh, we were down in almost all the schools in the single digits. Abilene might have been up into the ten or twelve that are, that are, uh, either quarantined or PUIs, but that's down from, you know, eighty, ninety, a hundred and fifty a couple weeks ago, so, uh, that's extremely good news. We hope we can keep a lid on that. I think a lot of that is due to, uh, their willingness to follow some of the recommendations, uh, not only from the school staff, but from parents and everybody else. Harrington still has had very minimal cases. Solomon's had a few, but, but nothing tremendous. Chapman is, is way down as well. Uh, I would mention that, uh, just a couple of things on the comments that, that Lori brought, it made. Uh, one about the Kate and the Solomon situation from the mayor. I would challenge his comment, again, the fact that, uh, yeah, I think he, in the same article, he also said there were no cases in Solomon, we didn't need to interject and get involved in it. There are cases, there have been cases in Solomon. He hasn't been involved in it, wouldn't know. And, uh, when the superintendent of the school and I both read that article, we looked at each other and said, who the hell's he talking about? Because we do have and have had cases in Solomon. So that was inaccurate. The issue on the substitutes, and there is money, we've got, we've got money to hire substitutes that we've given to schools. Problem is the people. There's nobody to do it. Uh, I know from a fact, Solomon is, we hired two full-time subs for the whole year and we can't get any others. And I know from, from our meetings with Greg Brown and, uh, and Jerry Hodgson over Chapman, as well as Don Lynn down at Harrington, there aren't any subs around that are able, that they're able to hire. There just aren't any. And they're utilizing what they can. So it's not a matter of money, it's a matter of getting, from what I'm told from them, getting people that are willing to do it. And when you've got, at one point, you know, you're needing ten or fifteen or twenty subs and they're just not out there because all five school districts are trying to do the same thing. I, they're just not viable numbers and that's a challenge for them, so.
So Brad, was there any money allocated to school districts throughout the community? Any allocated from COVID money? Any COVID money allocated to these?
There was, and that's, that's the next thing I'm going to go through, is the Sparks stuff. Is that what you're talking about?
Exactly.
Yeah, so, uh, but I guess the bottom line is from our meeting, things were very positive. The numbers are down. Knock on wood, I hope we can keep it that way. So, um, and, and the challenge and the goal is to keep kids in school. Uh, we've said all along and they, the superintendents have planned in their plans that we have worked with them on to have a backup plan, secondary plan if we do have a spike or an uptick. And, uh, most of them, I think if not all of them, do have their hybrid plan in place, uh, which would be the next step to split and, and alter that. It's not ideal by any means, but it does keep them back in, in school to some degree, so. Uh, I really feel for the superintendents. I really feel for the school nurses, as I've told you before. They're taking it on the chin, trying to deal with all this stuff. Uh, it appeared to me yesterday the attitudes were much better than they have been the past weeks. So I think with the lesser numbers, uh, things are going a little bit better and hopefully we'll continue to see that. Uh, on the Sparks funding, I provided in your packet, the, uh, the printout. The Sparks funding is the, uh, is the three point six million dollars that was referred to, it came into the county. And I'll just kind of rehash how that went. You know, when we learned that we were getting that money, we immediately, you know, and immediately set up the money with the cities and the school districts. You guys were there, we handed out a Stroh Hall so that we could do as much social distance thing as we could. And we went through that and said, we understand we're getting this money, we want to work with you to see how we can best achieve, you know, the best strategic plan to put it out. And it comes, uh, there's two categories. The one's reimbursement for any COVID expenses, uh, prior to, uh, that time. The other portion was mitigation money that they call direct aid. And that is to purchase things that we can utilize, either services or items or people, uh, that we can utilize between now through the end of the year, uh, to help mitigate and deal with the COVID issues. And, uh, so we basically laid the groundwork for everybody. We gave them, I think, three weeks, if I remember right, I don't remember the exact dates Janelle did, to, uh, get back with her on what money was requested. I'm glad to say, I've said it several times, I'll say it again, we honored every request we got from the city or, or a school district. And, uh, just to give you some numbers, uh, the, these are requested numbers from the cities and this is what they got. City of Abilene got two hundred and sixty-four thousand and change. Uh, I won't go through everyone, but, uh, City Harrington got ninety-five hundred, nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. Uh, City Solomon got eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. Down on the school districts, uh, Chapman School District got, uh, four hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. Uh, the Harrington School District got five hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. Uh, USD four thirty-five, Abilene got a hundred and ten thousand, one seventy-seven. And Solomon got two hundred and seventy-one, two fifty-seven. So St. Andrews has also given a little over six, six thousand dollars, even though they're not a public school. And I mentioned that to you, we felt like it was important to make sure that we helped them out and we gave them what they had requested, so. We also gave, you know, we also were able to award some to Central Kansas Mental Health as well. The county's tally was, basically, we took what was left and made our projects work, was two million, seventy-eight thousand dollars, so, uh, and of that, we had three major projects. As you remember, we purchased a new ambulance that's COVID-prepared with, uh, UV lighting and the extra disin, I call it disinfecting, uh, stuff inside, uh, and a pressurized system and stuff. We also are adding on to, uh, Stroh Hall with the extra bathrooms and showers, uh, which we have needed for years. And someone might ask, how's that related to COVID? Well, it's related from the standpoint that Stroh Hall is in our emergency operations plan, is the county emergency shelter if we have to stand one up, uh, which we did years ago because of an ice storm and that's one of those things. And we know that if we do have an emergency public shelter, uh, opened out there, that we don't have sufficient bathrooms and don't have any showers at all right now. And we've experienced that in the past when we worked with the Red Cross and, and opened it up, so this will allow us to have a fully functional public, uh, shelter if the need arises, for whatever reason, whether it's because of a, you know, a, a virus outbreak or an ice storm or a tornado or whatever the case may be, uh, we'll have that capability. So the other part of that is building a building down at the county yard to house the PPE and the emergency vehicles and stuff that is unique to COVID that are, we're responding out with those, so. Um, so that's where that money's going to. It's broken out in your, in your handout and, uh...
Now Brad, what about the senior people in Dickinson County, the state nursing homes and elderly that are living in the state by themselves? Are, are all those rocks being in turn so that everybody's been covered as far as looking at?
You know, we were contacted by the nursing home out here in Abilene, uh, one on Brady. And if you remember, there were three phases of money coming from, phase one is the Sparks money. Phase two and phase three, we didn't have anything to do with and weren't eligible for it. But in phase two, every nursing home got a check for X dollars based on the number of beds they have.
Okay.
And I forget what that dollar amount was, but it was pretty hefty. And so I know that, uh, the nursing homes in the state, that was not just county and state, all were given money under around two of that, but it didn't come through us.
Okay.
It came directly from the state, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that? I'll answer, but, uh, we've done our best to divide it up and put it where it could best be used. But I'm really proud to say that, number one, we got on it fast.
Yeah.
Uh, we were able to dispense that money out. The last of it went out a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we got agreements with each one of the jurisdictions that basically says if you don't spend it the way you said you did, you got to reimburse us and protect us. And that was a requirement of the Sparks Committee. Uh, but also we were able to give everybody what they asked for. And, uh, so if they, if somebody hypothetically, if somebody complains they didn't get enough money, it's because they didn't ask for it.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I know from, from talking to our superintendent of Solomon and his conversations with the school districts were a rarity in the state because a lot of counties haven't even, at this stage in the game, it's shocking, but there are counties out there haven't decided how they're going to spend the money.
Correct.
So, and we felt it was important to our cities and school districts to get that in their hands as soon as possible. They started experiencing expenses back in March or April, so, uh, we want to get it back to them. We've done that, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.